Item number seven. Final financial report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, and September 30, 2020 update. This will be presented by our Finance Director, Spencer Morrison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I will be providing a high-level overview of the financial activities for the general fund and both of the city's utility funds for 2019 and 2020, and for the first quarter of 2020, 2021. I'm going to keep it high level because I did, the information has not changed since I last talked about the 1920 results. It hasn't changed significantly from back in October. But I do feel that I do need to give you an update. The following slides will be for the, if I can go the right way. For the general fund, 2019, 2020 results. We do have, as a reminder, revenues did exceed expenditures by $2.5 million for an operating surplus. This was unexpected, given the, all the news we'd gotten about financials, the financial situation, a recession, all sorts of really dire news. However, our expenditures were curtailed, and we had some, quite a nice shop local movement locally appears with our auto dealers and some other local vendors, local businesses. We finished very close to what I reported to you back in October, like I said, with revenue slightly over budgets and expenditures. And the expenditure savings were throughout most categories, with savings from salaries and benefits, mostly due to unfilled positions in police and public works, and savings in material supplies and services with big decreases in activity due to reduced hours worked during the closures, and savings in capital acquisitions entirely from police and fire grants that are still in progress. Savings occurred as city teams responded to the uncertainties of the ongoing pandemic, and I'll show you a breakdown of the savings by category in a later slide. On the revenue side, property tax was 1.6% over budget. Sales tax was 1.1% over budget. Business licenses were 26.8% over budget. I don't, I don't see a pattern that kind of explains that for me other than maybe we budgeted just a little bit lower. And franchise fees were 3.9% over budget. Continuing with our top 10 largest revenues, hotels and motel surcharge, which we also call TOT more universally, was 13.2% under budget, which we expected as travel restrictions were in place for most companies and a lot of people observed, were afraid to travel or just were not going to travel. Many events were canceled at hotels. Building permits were over budget. We had a little bit of activity toward the end of the year. And police special revenues were about 2.6% over budget in 1920. CSAG Fire Contract, which is the fire service the Yuba City provides outside the city limits, was 2.9% over budget. Recreation fees were 52.4% under budget due to the cancellation of many programs. And we did have some operating transfers that were close to budget. Now, the top 10 revenues totaled about 1.8% over budget. In this list of expenditure category savings, you can see that most everything, as we go down the list, there was a savings in most lines. Heat and power and telephone were over. Some of the smaller lines such as rental bids, can I do this? Rental rentals of buildings and equipment and land. We just, we budgeted really low and received, you know, three times, roughly three times the amount we budgeted for 331%. But we're talking very small numbers here. And in some of the, some of the other categories that you'll see that we're at 100% are ones where they're more of an internal service fund. So we bill, it's the Finance Department billing the department. So those are going to be about 100% every time. As you can see, a lot of these expenditures were lower, much lower than budgeted. And so much of that was in response to the pandemic and reduced activities and reduced service delivery. For the total at the bottom, sorry, I'm shooting around a piece of wood here. The total at the bottom was, the general fund expenditures ended about 92.2% of budget. The following slides are referencing the quarter, first fiscal year quarter for Yuba City, ending September 30. And while it looks like, we know what 1920 looks like, 2021 still has some unknowns. As Diana, as interim City Manager Langley reported, we are, were able to stay at home orders been lifted. But when we look at our local statistics, we're still in a pretty dire situation as far as the pandemic goes. And so we'll continue to monitor revenues and support council's vision as we discuss possible amendments at a future meeting. I just wanted to show you graphically the top 10 general fund revenues in the first quarter. It's, you would expect, I guess, just to divide the year, the budget in court into fourths and say, well, we should be roughly around 25% in every category for expenditures and revenues. But isn't always the case just because of timing. For instance, property tax, we have a big goose egg here because we don't receive our property taxes until around this area, right here, about the February, March range of 2021, of this calendar year. So, so some of these are going to be, are going to be blank, but just know that it's a timing difference. And we don't expect to see that we're having a problem. It's just the timing of when these revenues come in every year. Let's see. You can see that sales tax is approaching, this is for the first, for the first, like it's the first three months, and it's approaching 25, but it's not quite there yet. The reason for that, I'll have to say, the reason for that is because we do, we accrue, we've only received, and I'll show this later, July through October in this fiscal year. The May and June taxes were received this fiscal year, but accrued back to last fiscal year. And recreation programs, of course, was hit pretty hard. Sales tax, we do track 16 quarters of sales tax history. Probably pretty small from the other side of the room, but I'll cut to the chase and just say that the 16-quarter average on a cash basis, what we actually received in payments from the state, was 4.275%, and the four-quarter average was 4.5% for the last four quarters, which would be October through December of 19, to July, September of 20. And then on an adjusted basis, we're looking at 3.2% and 2.4% for the 16-quarter average and the four-quarter average. So still an increase over prior years. We're still trending upward. And this, the difference between cash and adjusted is on the adjusted basis, our consultant, our sales tax consultant, HDL, pulls out irregularities and with the presumption that we're going to have to, either we received money that wasn't due to us or we did not receive money that was due to us. And so they take those irregularities and they smooth them out and tell us what we should have been if everything had gone well. When we don't receive money sometimes, or when we do receive money, sometimes it's because a company will double up on a payment for some reason because maybe they missed a payment when they changed their permit number or reorganized the business in some way. So, so it's not as simple for us as just looking at the cash that comes in. We have to analyze the quality of the figures and then project what we're going to be getting forward based on adjustments. Continuing with the top 10 general fund revenues, the top, or the top general fund revenues. You can see hotel motel surcharge has not done well at all in the first quarter of the new fiscal year, but we wouldn't expect so either. Building permits has done very well at about 59.5% of the annual budget. And that's because we received a large receipt, a large permit receipt from the LDS Temple Project that's across the road from City Hall. And police special services are quite low just because there have not been a lot of functions happening for them to charge and provide special services. And like, like blocking off streets or keeping, keeping traffic control, I should say, is a good example of that. Business licenses are low, only at about 5.3%, but that is also because it's a, it's a timing thing. The licenses aren't due until later this month, and then there's still, there won't be penalties due until next month. And so it'll be when those penalties are, are sending out penalty letters, like, you better pay your business, annual business license tax or else there'll be penalties. That's when we start getting a rush of revenue coming in. On the expenditure side, salaries and benefits is just below the 25% you might expect, but a good portion of that could, is most likely because of some vacancies and because of, just because we're still in a pandemic response. In the first quarter, we were in varying degrees of being open by department. And I have backed out, we were at 30, we were at 30.1% of budgeted amounts, but part of that on paper was because we pay our CalPERS unfunded actuary liability payment all at one time to gain a savings. And so we make that payment in July. And so it's, it's 12 months of payments all at one time, and that skews the expenditure. So I did back that number out, and we're, we're at about 20.5% of general fund salary paid compared to budget. Materials and supplies and services are about 18.3% compared to what we budgeted. And capital purchases are about 10.9% what we budgeted. And capital purchases sometimes are pick up in the second half of the fiscal year just because it takes a while to mobilize those purchases, contracts, designing. For instance, if we were going to buy a utility bed truck with a lift on it and a man lift on it, sometimes it takes a year to get that ordered and get that spec'd out and ordered. So there's always often a delay. The total general fund expenditures equal about 19.9% of the amount budgeted as of September 30. So before I go on to utility funds, are there any questions from the dais that you'd like me to answer before we go on to utility?
Did we, did we lose Councilwoman Esmondola for a bit?
I'm here.
Okay. Did you have any questions for Spencer Grace?
No, that's, the video went out for a little bit, so I'm trying to fix it.
Okay. Councilman Kirchner?
The video went out for five seconds for everyone, but we're back online now.
Okay. Councilman Kirchner, questions?
There I am, thanks.
Councilwoman Shaw? Or excuse me, Vice Mayor Shaw?
That's twice I've been demoted. Are they trying to tell me something? No, it's a couple of quick questions for you, Mr. Morrison. The, the first one is concerning sales tax. Everything else, as you said, is timing issue. But the sales tax was a little higher first quarter of the fiscal year. Have we gotten any indication? Because retail sales nationwide were down 4% during the Christmas holidays while online sales were up, which affect the ratio we get? This was always the quarter that I was concerned about. Have we got any indication or has CDFTA slowed down any payments at this point? Because they had hiccups over the last few years with all the changeover. Can you give me any insight on sales tax for this past quarter?
The one ending December 31?
Correct.
I do not, I will not start receiving those payments for some time yet. The most recent payments that we've received are through October.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't, they're still calculating that. They're still receiving those monies. And I don't, I don't have anything yet for November, let alone December.
Okay, all right. Be looking forward to those. I knew that they would be coming out in the next couple of months here, but I didn't know if you had any insight from HDL as far as any indication of yet. They're seeing anything from the state that they've kind of given you a, any indication or we're still awaiting information?
We're still waiting. I do have a meeting. So HDL is still finishing the quarter that ended September 30 as well. So that'd be there, they call that the third quarter because they're on a, sales tax with the state is generally on a, on a calendar year. And so I'll have a meeting with them the second week of February. And at that meeting, that's when I'll start saying like, hey, what are you hearing? Tell us, tell us what you know. But they, they spend quite a bit of time processing those adjustments and those abnormalities and trying to get those smoothed out to know what we can expect so we can budget it better.
Okay, oh, thank you. I'll be looking forward to that. The other one was, the slide you're on was salary and benefits. As you were talking, you kind of alluded to, we've, we've had savings because of COVID, but I just want to make sure that everyone's aware, the council took the position last year that we didn't furlough people, we didn't do things as far as that for salary savings because of COVID. We've made, you know, had people work from home, do things. But the savings are from positions that didn't impact people that have been held and such, correct?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
And some of that could be overtime is when we're, in some of our responses, there's been, there's been less overtime in some cases. And so there's some other factors, but vacant positions would probably be the biggest part of that.
Thank you. It was just a point of clarification to make sure that
Thank you.
we were there. Thank you.
I had my questions answered. Thank you.
Very good. So as we look at the utility funds again, these numbers have, have not changed really significantly since we last, since I last presented them to you. And I should mention, as part of the agenda packet, there is a comprehensive financial report on 1920 that we traditionally put out. And given there are no questions or changes requested by the council, I'll be putting that onto the Finance Department's website at yubacity.net shortly after this meeting, sometime this week. So you can see that the, the revenues for operating capital, operating capital in the water utility were a little less than, than we anticipated. Sometimes it's due to conservation. We, we had a mild, you know, it could be a mild winter or a mild spring, rather. So people aren't watering quite as, quite as, quite as soon. And it could be partially due to some delinquent bills that are out there. We do have delinquencies as the governor did suspend the power of utility companies to use the shut-off tool for delinquency, collect delinquencies. Next, there's state revolving fund surcharge, which pays back a loan that the Hillcrest District took out to pay for water, connecting to the city water, was paid in full at 100.5%. Expenditures for the operating programs and capital programs and debt service were all down slightly. Debt service, I'm not so concerned about because there's probably just a timing difference. But the, with the capital and operating programs, again, has a lot to do with, I'm sure, with, with response. And they're on the operating side with vacant positions. Debt coverage is something that we do spend a lot of time watching and making sure of, the debt covered ratio here is shown in thousands of dollars. In the calculation, we take total revenues, including capital connections fee revenues, subtract operating expenses to get the net revenues. This amount is then divided by the total debt service amount to get a ratio. For the city's bond covenants, which are the rules that we live by when we issue debt, it's the rules around the debt and the, what protects the bond buyers. This ratio must be maintained at a level of at least 1.2% or 120%. The city's ratio was fairly low back in 1617 at 1.61% and then increased to a much healthier rate in 1718, about 2.14% and 2.66 in 1819. The financial final ratios for 1920 is 2.36. So it's coming back down from 1718, but it's still well above the 1.2 or 120%. Waste water's a little bit, little bit different. It's a, revenues came in at 100, almost 102% of what we budgeted. Capital is, capital connections are below budget at 70.6%. And those are the revenues we receive when we have, typically when we have development because they, people, that's the fees that we receive to tie into the city's wastewater system. The, on the expenditure side, the operating and capital program, capital equipment were down quite a bit. But that could just be that we didn't, we have yet to purchase that, those capital equipments, they could be encumbered in a PO. And in the operating program, it's the same as, same as any other. Just during the pandemic, we maybe didn't fill as many positions as quickly as we'd like to. And capital improvement project contributions were right at, right at budget. In fact, the project expenditures for CIP was about 140% of budget, which means that we were working on getting projects done a little bit quicker than, than we budgeted. This is the wastewater debt coverage in thousands of dollars, at least the charts in thousands of dollars, the percentages are the percentages. And they have the same, the same ratio in the covenants of 1.2% of the debt to the, to the expenses. And so you do see that this, this ratio is declining here. And when I look at the debt, the debt payments are increasing, which is something that we know years in advance because we, the debt coverage, the debt payments are in a amortized chart. In revenue, the debt is increasing about, increased about 73% over the four years. And revenue increased about 38% over the four years. So, so that's, that kind of makes up that difference and makes that ratio a little less, less favorable. Similar slides in the 2021. So this would be the July 1 through September 30 of the water fund. It's, it's very difficult to say, you know, which, what percent should we be at? But when you look at this SRF charge, which we, we are successful at billing and collecting, you see we're at a perfect 25%, so it's a really regular, steady stream revenue for us. Operating revenues are a little bit, a little bit higher. Capital revenues are a little bit lower, but that's very easy for those to be seasonal. On the expenditure side, you can see some really, really low numbers here. But again, that, that could be just some delay in, in bills coming in just because we're so early in the year and there's such a lag on invoices sometimes. And the wastewater fund is, is in a similar position. So moving on to, we, we do have, I'll remind everybody watching that we do have a Budget Ad Hoc Committee. And the City Council formed this committee to look for opportunities to make recommendations on budget amendments and policy changes. I just wanted to give a little update, these, some of the things that they've completed. They have met, the committee has met with each department and reviewed department budgets line by line, identified account uses like professional service that were inconsistent and will be working on those. Found a need for the pooled employee development, which is the former travel and training account to be reallocated back to departments, and found a need for more information on budget requests by departments pandemic versus normal operations. And these are all things that they will continue to evaluate and bring before to, bring forward to the council for decision at a later date, along with other, other recommendations. Currently, the, the committee is reviewing vacant positions. They did notice that recurring, reoccurring vacant positions one year longer may, may provide potential cost savings. And so we're looking deeper at that. They've asked directors to prioritize budget requests for further review and are reviewing costs to fully staff the fire department. Next steps will be to, the committee wants to review the vehicle replacement plan, review the technology replacement plan, explore the possibility of having an equipment replacement plan, and finalize recommendations for council consideration. Did want to provide a, hopefully, an easy-to see or understand budget timeline. In the page three of the published operating budget, the city's operating budget for 2021, there is a calendar that's not quite graphical like this. But we're, we're approaching here where CIP will be, CIP requests and needs, which is capital improvement projects, will be developed and submitted by departments. And then we move into March, move into operating, the operating budgets. And then finance processes the submissions in around April. And then around May, we have a study, budget study session, which is a public meeting. And then early June, early to mid-June, budget adoption. And then around June, July, August, finance takes all the, the new recommendations and takes the budget and puts it into, builds a book out of it. And then the last step for us on the budget is to submit for national award and to distribute the budget books themselves. So that's the, that's the timeline that you can expect to see. And that timeline is relatively the same year after year after year. And with that, that is my early financial review, and I'm happy to field any questions.
Thank you, Spencer. Councilwoman, start with you.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I just have a general question for the Budget Ad Hoc Committee. Do you have a timeline on when you're considering reviewing those final steps? Do you have any date when that'll be completed for, for us to discuss as a council with some of your recommendations?
I would say that we were, we were thrown a bit of a curveball with COVID. And we've kind of held off on, on some meetings. I think we're getting, there were some other assignments for the folks that were on the Ad Hoc Committee as well that were taking some time. So I think with that off, off of our plate, we're going to be working closely with finance and get back after it. I know that there is some discussion about, that we're going to have to have as a council in regards to the budget process. What Spencer's outlined to you is a typical process. We may, we may do something or may suggest something different with the budget pending some COVID financial information as it becomes available. I can assure you that it is something that is definitely on our mind about getting back after. But I do not have a specific date for you at this time.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering because we have some future meetings and decisions that are going to need to be made. And I'm hoping that we can find a timeframe where the budget ad hoc completes, summarizes, and then we're able to take those recommendations and consider how those modifications would happen or, you know, to accept or refine or change to, to whatever the existing timeline is with the budget. But I appreciate the work. I recognize the delay and I'm just hoping to work. I recognize the delay and just hoping to get more like a, by the end of January, by the end of February, more of a closer timeline request.
If I had to look in a crystal ball to help you out, I would say it's probably going to be February before it's January. I would also mention that I don't think there will, at least for this coming year, I do not see that there will not be a budget ad hoc committee going forward. I think it's an appropriate and proper linkage between staff and the council, just to have continued dialogue in regards to, to the finances. I think it's worked well when the mayor Harris had, during his time as mayor and, and vice mayor Shaw were on it. And I think it's been, at least in my opinion, it's been helpful for the vice mayor and myself over the last year. So I look forward to perhaps passing the baton to others who are on the council to sit on that ad hoc committee on a go forward basis. But I do, my own one, one person opinion is having a budget ad hoc committee makes continued sense.
Thank you, mayor.
Mr. Kirchner?
No questions.
Okay. I'm going to go with Mr. Harris. Okay. Vice mayor.
I've been promoted again. Thank you. Good job.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Spencer, thank you. I, I do want to mention that for Lynn Hale and Spencer and Diana, who's been in these budget committees, it has been a, been a pleasure sitting with you and working through those. I know it's not easy, easy work, especially when you have folks firing all kinds of questions at you and, and you being relatively new in your position. But I think we've handled things well. I think the foundation set by, by Sean and Dave is good. I hope that Dave and I have taken it a little better and move it forward and will continue to do so with your help and your assistance. But I do appreciate your time, staff's time and being patient with our questions and our suggestions and look forward to, to continuing to move forward as we develop this year's budget.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
No public comment.
All right. Thank you. So we'll note and file the financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. Thank you, Spencer.